My name is Jonathan Lane and my address is 460 County Road 218, Athens, Tennessee. I pastor heritage in the Baptist church here in Spring City and my reason is for speaking today is deeply rooted in conviction and concern and compassion. And I'll testify that it is my conviction that the Bible teaches total abstinence from alcohol consumption. As I minister to people and their families in this area who are destroyed by both purchasing and consuming fermented drinks, I am convinced furthermore to believe what God's word says on the deception of alcohol, that mine is a longer strong drink is raging and whoever is deceived by is not wise. We all know that at the beginning alcohol promises joy, liberty, and escape, however it only leads to bondage as alcohol affects the mind and emotion and the senses resulting many times in just evil things both in the thought and the actions of the intoxicated person. I've come to speak out of the concern of the people of Spring City, Tennessee, and there is a real destruction that alcohol brings. The statistics show that 20,000 people die each year on our highways and the one person dies every 20 minutes in an alcohol-related incident. Some other statistics that I have here that show 50 to 68% of drownings are alcohol-related, 86% of murders are alcohol-related, 80% of suicides are alcohol-related, and 65% of child abuse is alcohol-related. It is reported that nearly 200,000 people die each year in our country because of their own consumption or someone else who is close to them consuming alcohol. These facts are a testimony to the detrimental effects that the use of alcohol has put not just on the country but on the lives of people in small towns just like Spring City. Though I aim to speak from a place of conviction and truth, I cannot neglect the word of God when the book of Jude states in verse 22, "And some have compassion making a difference." I believe God's desire is for more for people's lives and the greatest compassion to human being was shown on the cross in which Jesus Christ died to save people from their sins. He took our place and bore the judgment of God, paying sin's penalty, which is death for us. He died on the cross so that we do not have to die in our sins and live in bondage to sin in this life. But by faith in Christ alone, trusting His finished work on the cross, we can be saved and live a transformed life by the power of the gospel. The compassion of Christ to all people is what really makes a difference in the lives of just ordinary people. The truth is that you do not consume alcohol, it consumes you. Fermented drinks state from the lives of individuals and families and all they do is state from communities such as ours much more than anyone is prepared to give. Because of what Christ has done in the lives of our church members, saving them from a life of drunkenness and bringing them to a life of holiness, and because of what I've seen alcohol do to the families who were once full of dreams and aspirations but are now left empty and broken because of the deception and destruction of fermented drinks, I believe with strong conviction that it would be best for the liquor store under any management to remain closed.
Anyone else? I will speak on behalf of Pastor Jonathan Joby. He himself communicated with me and expressed a concern. Although he concerned with me, he says, "I may be a little bit late to the party," but he also expressed likewise concerns in he and I's conversation. I appreciate and take deep appreciation to the concern of our citizens bringing forth to our to our beer board of their concerns. To place it on the concerns of the beer board administration. Mr. Joby, Pastor Joby's thing is he is working as a rehabilitation facility and his thoughts were the further away from him it is, the less likely for them to obtain it. Also, in the communication of obtaining it, they they wide, broad tattered, they got to look at. If they had to drive 17, 20 miles to get it, that means they gonna drive 17, 20 miles back home. What in that travel is gonna stop them from opening the container and consuming within that distance from leaving A to B and getting from B to come back to point A? We also discussed that issue. So, we've all got a copy of the application. We've heard our concerns. From the information that I have received, everything is in order and in check per our city attorney. This time, we move into number five to switch gears to new business, A is consideration of retail package, beer permit application from Mr. Patel, property location at 2352 Ray County Highway, Spring City, Tennessee.
We've done the one license, license here. Retail, when it says retail package store.
Yeah, the retail package store that we're going off now has the word beer permit on it application because they're done by the same board and your approval then goes off to the state with that, with it, and they'll give their approval if they pass the background.
Okay, now, my understanding is that there are a lot to jump through for the liquor licenses and have we done all of that already?
Yeah, they have, they just came in and the paperwork came through and everything on our end is just complete. And the next step is for the board approval and then once the board approves it, they'll apply to the state, then the state will do their background checks on them and then that'll be accompanied by a letter of approval from the board and then they will be approved if they pass all the state criteria next.
Okay.
This is the prerequisite before it goes to state.
Okay, so this is retail package store beer permit application.
Yeah.
It should have, it should be a beer permit for liquor licenses?
It is, we have beer liquor license, state beer liquor license.
Yeah, the beer board gives them permission to apply for the liquor licenses, it's met all the local rules and that's why it has a beer permit on it, but it is a retail package store beer permit, so it'll be allowed if you all approve it, then it'll go to the state and state gives the liquor license, not us.
Yeah, yeah, I knew, I knew we had to send development to them. And it's, we already have a, we had a beer store and that's a certification, right?
I'm listening. I'm ready for whatever y'all have to say.
Okay. I made a motion, I'm not sure exactly what this motion is saying, but I made a motion that we approve the retail package store beer permit application from Mr. Patel, the property is located at 2352 Ray County Highway, Spring City, Tennessee.
That motion made by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins for the retail package store beer permit application from Mr. Patel on the property is located at 23524 Ray County Highway, Spring City, Tennessee. Any other question amongst the both? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Number six, other business?
What do we have to look at when we have applications for permits is what is legal and what's not? And if it's legal, then we open there, our own personal opinion, junk food, I should.
It is now 7:02. It's time for us to, Spring City Board of Commissioners, let the Spring City Police Department hold our monthly commission meeting. We will stay at this time now. Father, we thank you for saying, Father, we thank you for our last night's line down, Father, we thank you for the sermon we have here. Father, we ask you to continue to bless us and our community and bless it as a whole. Father, we ask you to continue to bless the police officer, the department, the volunteers that go out to do the civic duty to aid and assist those in dire need. Father, we ask you to bless the men and women that participate and works for the town of Spring City and all the deeds it has done. Father, we ask you to continue to keep them healthy, participate in the active part of our city government. Father, we ask you to bless the administrative department and the leaders and officers of our city government, the decisions we make, the deeds and things that we have in front of us, that we make the best judgment call we can for the town that benefited the citizens of the town of Spring City. Father, we ask you also to bless our men and women that send them to military service that fight so hard to protect our country from all hurt, harm, and danger. Father, we ask you to continue to bless the leaders of our country from our presidents all the way down through to our House of Representatives and all. Father, we ask you to touch their minds where they can come with one card and be unified and so we can stop the feud and fight over who's right and who's wrong. Father, if we get to and contend to this meeting, Father, we ask you to lead God directly and make us make the sound decisions that's gonna be pleasing and deal with it to our town of Spring City and its citizens. We ask you to express love in our Son Jesus' name, amen. Good, you want me to pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag which stands "One Nation Under God, International, Clearing Justice, Sorrow." Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Here.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Pastor Bauer?
Mayor Law?
And there's something I'd like to say before we go further. If any of you that know Pastor Bauer has a death in the family, she has a death of her daughter-in-law due to her accident at night, so keep praying in her family and our thoughts and prayers as they go through this time of the week. Number five is approval of the previous minutes, A, October 2nd, 2025 regular commission meeting. Make a motion, we approve October 2nd, 2025 regular commission meeting minutes. As written.
I second.
That motion made, Commissioner Bieber, seconded by Commissioner Murphy to approve the October 25th, October 2nd, 2025 regular commission meeting minutes. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Law?
Aye. B is October 30th, 2025 special call meeting.
I made a motion that we approve the special call commission meeting minutes of October 30th, 2025.
I second. There we had a motion made by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Bieber to approve the special call commission meeting on October 30th, 2025. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Law?
Aye. Number six is petition and communication from the public. At this time, do you have anybody to sign in?
Status of the Spring City demolition procedure.
Status of this training demolition procedure, as I've stated previously, they're gonna be written according to what is gonna be fitting with us, so we will have a copy of it on the books for anyone who's concerned and wants to read into it. So it is still in the process. Reason why it is not complete is we've had status change and there's some things that we're adding in and taking away from what we previously started. Reason why it's taken so long is when we actually had a meeting with myself, I, city manager, the building inspector, and our attorney, notes was not properly documented on what was talked about. So that left a hole in it, so I wanted to be right and go home and so it would be satisfying for our citizens that we have a rules and regulations that's guided by the building body of the town of Spring City. Anybody else? Anybody else? This time? Yes, you can speak. One of the things that I'll have to stress in this meeting, we have to be sort of breathing with it, so, go ahead.
Okay, I, as you know, we had to get three bids to go do this playground. I have with me, I have three bids from three different companies. I actually made up four bids because of the other original company sent me two, so I have those and I just wanted to say that I could not believe the difference in the first company I spoke with and then the next two companies I spoke with. If we do this playground, which I truly hope that we do, I want to make sure that we get the best for what we put into it. I don't want to say a budget because at the same time we can set a budget and I believe we can outdo that budget, but I want to make sure that if we do this and whatever company we go with, that it is truly all-inclusive because I was having pieces thrown at me that were all-inclusive that to me originally looked inclusive, you know, it was things that, okay, my son might can do it, but then I discovered that while my son might be doing this piece of equipment, other kids can't. So again, that's still not all-inclusive. So, I have Amber here, she is with one of the companies that I have spoke with and she has honestly the only company I have found so far that is truly 100% inclusive in their products. And they have started rendering and have actually custom pieces that my son can use that, you know, no other company is willing to do those things and it's, it's a big deal to me and other kids that are like my son that have no upper body strength, no mobility things like that is very important, but she's got a couple things that she wanted to say if that's okay.
Yes ma'am, please.
I wasn't sure how much time I would have to speak, so I just wanted to make sure that I hit the high points. First, I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Amber, I am the East Tennessee Consultant for Recreational Concepts. We represent Landscape Structures Incorporated. Landscape Structures is the only playground company to be recognized on Forbes 100 accessibility list. That's the first, this year was the first year that they play out a list of top 100 companies that truly meet the needs of individuals of all disabilities, you know, apples on there, there's literally a hundred companies. Landscape Structures is the only playground company to make that list and the reason for that is a multitude of reasons, there's a multitude of reasons, from the materials that we use to the fact that we actually have an inclusive play advocacy board. We have Jill Moore, who is our inclusive play specialist. She has spied with it and has been in an assistive mobility device since she was a child. She knows what it's like to be a child and be on a playground and not be able to play. Inclusive play, you know, for me, that's, that's my life, that's what I do, but when I think back even in my childhood, that, I don't remember coming to a playground and seeing somebody in a wheelchair or, you know, any sort of disability and that's what we're trying to do through our company is to change that, make truly inclusive play spaces for children of all abilities. So Jill comes alongside our designers, along with an actual team of about 10 to 12 children with multiple disabilities and Jill brings the inclusive aspect to it. Hannah Child, who's in an assistive mobility device, can they use this? How can they use this? Is this actually functional? And then this year we actually brought on the 12 children with differing disabilities to test out the products, play with the products, let us know, you know, do you like it? Can you use it? It's not just a think tank of a bunch of people who think that they know what kids want. So, with that, I've kind of walked through with Chelsea some of the items that were display tougher, some were great, some were not, you know. One of the play structures that she was, she was given as a inclusive play space was a play structure that was a bunch of ramps and a slide. And I asked her, I said, "Okay, when Silas is rolling up these ramps, where's the play value? What is he going to do? His brother's gonna push him up a ramp, what's the end goal?" And we got split behind it, there was no play value, it was a ramp to a slide. Her son is six feet tall at 14 years old, so he's Silas's play buddy. On a standard slide, how is he going to be able to get down that slide without hitting his head? And furthermore, how is he going to get Silas out of his chair onto the slide without knocking holes with their heads because Silas is almost as tall as me when my shoes are off? So in the play structure that we have designed, and it's a first draft, and I've told Chelsea this multiple times, first draft, 15th draft, it does not matter, whatever we do, we are going to do a custom and we're gonna do it right. We do not have a catalog, we do have a catalog, don't get me wrong, of ideas and options, but we, when we build an exclusive playground and we build a custom, you know, we put in the design that we're head far for the slide to be tall enough for someone like for son to be able to slide down. Spring riders that have high backs and strap and sides so that Silas can actually get on a spring rider with his brother, with his sister, and actually be able to enjoy the play. The spring riders that we were shown from other companies are just your standard spring rider, that's great. Silas could not use that at all. Our We Go Round is an inclusive, kind of merry-go-round where someone in an assistive mobility device can go in and park their wheelchair and then their friends who may not be in an assistive mobility device can actually spin with them. One of the options that she was given, it was, it was a basic version of that, but there was nowhere else for anybody else to sit. And the whole point of inclusive play for children of all abilities is for children like my daughter to be able to play with children like Silas. And it's not to quit, not to say, "This is an equipment for Silas and he can use it, that's great," but if he's over here in the corner playing by himself, that's completely negates the idea of what this playground is. So, I have a lot more to say and I am more than happy to share more details with you, but.
Okay, thank you. We, we are also, and Chelsea doing this, trying to get our friends and partners and members of the park board involved also. Part of their structure, being part of the city, is to help us keep upgrading and put new toys, swings, and stuff inside our park facilities. I'd like to get them on board too. They had also been in the first presentation with Ms. Chelsea, they agreed they want to be on board, want to hold them accountable. Ms. Chelsea had contacted me to actually, we missed across paths. City manager had meetings, I was in office for a while, I get all my stuff done, email sent, you know, about to leave, go pack your stuff, well, she's coming in as I'm going out of town, we missed each other today for communication, but I can give her the information that you have so that we can sit down with our partners and have some discussion on the ground. The other thing of it is, we, I understand with this, we gotta come up with the amount of space to put it in before y'all can build it, correct?
That is correct. And we look at one space and we're open to wherever you want to put it.
Reason why I say that is we have a five-year plan of growth and changes with five-year plan of growth and changes with, uh, remodelations already in place, uh, that includes our venture part at this point in time. And I'm under the impression that we're looking to put this at the venture.
That location that we focus.
All right. So we're gonna say, thank you. Well, I thank you for your time. Uh, appreciate you coming and being with us. Normally we have lengthier discussions when we have what we call our workshop. Uh, tonight is one of them times where we are in the midst of doing our regular monthly business and folks discussion. But thank you and for your presentation. Uh, once you leave with Ms. Chelsea, we will get it and go, try to go forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Real quick on your question.
Yes, sir.
This will be a custom inclusive playground? Okay.
There were, um, and of course, time, time short, there were a couple of, um, playgrounds that I wanted to highlight and the stories behind them. They're very similar to Chelsea's. Um, but if you go to the artworks page, uh, Mary's Magical is on there. Uh, Rachel's Garden is on there. The, um, upcoming Grunde County, um, playground um, is listed on there and, uh, L E G's is also, uh, a playground that is in the works, uh, in Goodletville. But if you get a moment, um, each one of those parks have a Facebook page and a website. Um, we have either completed those projects or are in the process of. And I just wanted to, to say that as a reference as to when I say this is what we do. Those are really pretty, what I call legacy park examples of children who have either passed unfortunately or are in a position like Silas. And those parks were made possible because of a vision of that. And we were really blessed to be able to be a part of those. Get a chance. Check those out.
You ready? Moving on, number seven. Relevant resolution. Twenty twenty-five, fourteen resolution authorizing the Spring City portion of the fund funding for the January through June twenty twenty-six fishing tournaments to be split jointly with the Ray County as previously approved by the Ray County Commission. Noted not to exceed over seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Also noting this, this is hotel motel money, tax money that we are spending. Uh, one of the expenditure expenditures of that, of that hotel motel tax is it can be used for something deemed as tourism and that's what this is for. But all of them together won't, uh, won't be over seven thousand six. Five sixty-five.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion on, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Resolution authorizing Spring City's portion of funding for the January to June twenty twenty-six fishing tournaments be split jointly with the Ray County as previously approved by the Ray County Commission. Not to exceed seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars for all these, uh, fishing tournaments.
I second this. And a motion made by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Beaver, that on resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, resolution authorizing Frank City's portion of the funding for the January through June twenty twenty-six fishing tournaments to be split jointly with the Ray County as previously approved by the Ray County Commission not to exceed over seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Any other discussion amongst the board? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy? Mayor Wal.
E. Aye.
I'm gonna tell you why I made that and I, I was gonna vote against that. But I think we can actually make up seven thousand dollars. Some of the other stuff we've spent money on, some of these other fishing tournaments, I don't hope we ever save our money back on that. But drag them out with different loads and, uh, one of them I seen was like a thousand dollars, maybe less, may, uh, could be less. But not to exceed a thousand dollars just on one thing. I think we make a thousand dollars in town back on that, but like I said, that we, we got in before when I first got in, we, we've done a little bit more than what I thought we should, but anyway.
Uh, and, and another thing, I hope y'all look through the packet on them. One of the key things on there is missing. Does anybody notice what it is? Well, some of the tournaments they have them, some of the tournaments they don't.
Probably porta potties.
Porta potty. Now, I, I deeply, I'm deeply disturbed at, uh, of this issue due to the fact is our, our boat ramp down there is utilized quite a bit. Uh, and, uh, I will, uh, Thomas and I will sit down and have a discussion on this. I will try to get with Miss Fine on this. I don't like the idea of having a tournament down there and not having at least one porta potty, correct? Uh, you have combos of men and both women, both kind of people. John can run up across the bank, jump through a tree line, and he's safe. Sheila is not gonna do that. I'm sorry. So, uh, that's something I need to bring to their attention. And while it's on my mind for this, well, I'll bring it up. Uh, going forward, B, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, uh, fifteen. Resolution authorizing the town of Spring City to enter into a contract with Corin Maine for the water meter service you, uh, util, utilization and Flex Read software. Uh, y'all look that over, the last packet. This is a company that's gonna have to replace a company that's non-existent. So actually optional, we got. Yes, ma'am?
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Resolution authorizing the town of Spring City to enter into a contract with Corin Maine for water meter services utilizing Flex Read software.
Second. Okay, we had a motion made by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Jenkins. The R twenty twenty-five dash fifteen resolution authorizing the town of Spring City to enter into a contract with Corin Maine for water meter services, utilization of the Flex Read software. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Wal.
Uh. C is R twenty twenty-five dash sixteen resolution authorizing the city recorder to proceed with the water amount write-off from the April to September twenty twenty-five billing batch.
I've previously looked at.
Uh, I make a motion that we, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, resolution authorizing the city recorder to proceed with the water account write-off from the April to September twenty twenty-five billing batch.
Second. Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-five to sixteen. Need a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Beaver. Resolution authorizing the city recorder to proceed with the water amount, water accounts write-off from the April to September twenty twenty-five billing batch. Any other discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Wal.
Aye. D is motion and vote for the reschedule of November twenty-seven, twenty-seven twenty-two five workshop uh, for to Thursday, December fourth twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M.
We make a motion that we reschedule November twenty-seventh twenty twenty-five workshop to Thursday, fifth and ninth stealing, the Thursday, December fourth twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M.
Second. Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Murphy. Is the motion invoked concerning the reschedule of November twenty-seventh twenty twenty-five workshop to Thursday, December fourth twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Wal.
Aye. E is motion invoked concerning the reschedule of December twenty-fifth workshop to Thursday, January the eighth twenty twenty-six at five thirty P M.
Make a motion that we reschedule the December twenty-fifth twenty twenty-five workshop, Thursday, January eighth twenty twenty-six at five thirty P M.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion and vote, I mean, a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Murphy on the reschedule of December twenty-fifth twenty twenty-five workshop to Thursday, January the eighth twenty twenty-six at five thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Wal.
Aye. F is motion and vote to concern the reschedule of the January the first twenty twenty-six regular commission meeting to Thursday, January the eighth twenty twenty-six at seven P M.
Make a motion, uh, we reschedule the January first twenty twenty-six regular meeting to Thursday, January the eighth, uh, twenty twenty-six at seven P M. We'll be doubling up the workshop regular meeting, that's what it is.
Roll call. No.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Murphy. Reschedule January the first twenty twenty-six regular meeting to Thursday, January the eighth twenty twenty-six at seven P M. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Wal.
Aye. Number eight, other business. Uh, no, I, no, okay. Uh, on other business, uh, one of the things that I, I'm gonna propose to our, our board is we need to look at somehow or another to provide a porta potty at the boat ramp. Uh, if you wanna know the downright truth about it, state can come in and make us.
Or we need it.
Uh, due, due to the fact that it is a public recreational space. Uh, we would be in the same situation if we didn't have restrooms at our parks. The county has had to go in the phase of they keep porta potties at our county parks six months out of the year to stay within compliance. Uh, that's a ruling that you have to manage and maintain, John keep up, is to allow them restroom to themselves. So, uh, best be thinking on that as we go through the winter months. Like now, it's a little late process, uh, to consider. But that's something we need to think about and, uh, I, I have to sit on top of Thomas.
How does the county go about doing that? Is that Washington?
Oh, Washington Bar, Presia Bar, Marriadown Bar, Henderson Park. I was responsible for putting them in. What I got away with was using one handicap restroom. So it may please with our boat ramp. Can't get away with it. Cause you will have more than, they, they, the ruling is how many people do you normally have? On weekends, we got more than twenty-five out there in boat. So we, we might get away with one, but I'm here's my thought. If we have one and they have the tournaments, they bring one, that means there's two that. Okay? That's, that's, that's my prognosis, it's on it. But I want them to be responsible for putting one out there, not us somewhere down the road buying, paying for rental for a porta potty and they reap the benefits out of it all for us. I want their money too.
So just the county, have it, you have contracts with all of those things?
Uh, we, what we do is I, uh, I call three of the companies. I actually got burnt my one. I learned better and I went with the other. Pay an extra dollar to get their service. Uh, porta potty company use, they bought out the old company. They have premium restrooms, uh, porta potties. If you don't like them, you call them, they'll bring you that. We had that type of relationship. Uh, at least I did with them when I, before I left. Uh, something we can consider, I, I got away with it with the county is, uh, I had a reluctant thing. Like I say, I gotta talk with their city manager on this. I'm gonna open up Pandora's box. But that's something we need to think of as a board and as a town. Uh, we probably have local people that like to go fishing or go out to family fishing, coming off the boat. Gotta have some like restroom, especially with little kids. And they take them out their own boat. That's. Uh, number nine is our ordinance of a first reason. We have none. Ordinance of reading of a second reading, we have none. Comments from the board? None. Uh, I think we need you.
Charlie, come on in with the library. Uh, recently, uh, we were awarded, I'll be back, Memorial Library was awarded a tech grant check. Some of our local officials here, uh, city manager McCormick, uh, Jody Bow was here, Mayor Wal, and Trey Hargit showed up with Travis and Love, which others would have checked. And we were very grateful for that, you know, thousand dollars and, uh, it goes in those, it goes. They had so much to split over all public libraries. The library is, you drive by, you're gonna see it pops out a little bit more. We've had some construction work there. Uh, renovating it with pressure washing, some top pointing, mortar replacement, soffit facial replacement. So it's really looking good and, uh, I encourage you that if you don't have a library card, get one. Come on by and find a book. It's gonna be a cold Monday and it's gonna be a long winter. Find yourself a series of books to read. We'd love to see you down there. Thank you.
Number twelve. Motion to the yard? Yes. I'm making it. All right, we're motioning, Commissioner Jenkins, second, Commissioner Murphy. All over basically, aye?
Aye.